Hello, everybody, and welcome to The Texas Examiner. I'm Robert Sines, and this is my co-host, John Tipton.
Good morning.
Today, we've got a great show for you today. We've got a city councilman from Bernie, Texas, and his challenger. And so I'm proud to both these gentlemen for coming on the show, having the courage to come in and sit across each other.
Right.
And have respectful dialogue, but also to educate the viewers about their individual platforms and why they're running for office.
Right. And I think what folks, what you're going to get out of our show versus what you'll get at a candidate forum, say, one of the other, the meetings that happen monthly, is that we're going to get to the meet of who these folks are.
Yeah.
As people, as we go through these questions. So that way you have a better idea of why you're voting, because, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a nonpartisan race. So this is an opportunity for for these candidates to show everybody who they are and why they want to be hired by the people.
Right. Well, without further ado, let's let's introduce our guest today. We have, to my left over here, we have Mr. Ty Woolison, the incumbent right now in City Council District One, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
But welcome, welcome, Ty. And over to my right, we have Jeremy Pratt, who is a challenger to run for, running for City Council, District One. Welcome, Jeremy. John, do you want to start with one of our guests?
You know, I think what would be great, there isn't a time limit. As Ty, thank you for coming back on the show. You understand it's more of a conversation, right? So this is where I think people get to see who you are, see your facial reactions, how you're communicating as we ask maybe some tough questions and just kind of get to know who you are. So, Ty, if you wouldn't mind, kind of start us off and give us your elevator pitch on Ty Woolison.
Sure. Yeah. Well, first, I want to thank John and Robert for having me on again. I appreciate it. Loving what you guys are doing. Thank you, Jeremy, for being willing to sign up to, you know, run against me. It's a part of the process, democratic process. That's his right. And I look forward to this conversation and conversations to come. So I am the Mayor Pro Tem and City Councilman for District One. Mayor Pro Tem really just means that if the mayor's out, I'm filling in at the mayor election. That's a city council-appointed position. Most important things about me. First, my wife, Megan, her and her family have been in this area for about 30 years. Obviously, love everything about her. I have two daughters, a almost 10-year-old and a just-turned seven-year-old. Both of them are at Creighton Elementary, which is in District One. Big supporters of the school district and everything they do. And I love, with my city council hat, like, working collaboratively with the school, because they're a very important part of our community. I'm the owner of several businesses in town, Sybilla Creek Brewing and Hamby's, which are on Main Street. Those two businesses employ around 50 people in the community. Most of those live within the community. I also have a meat distribution company called Windy Hill Foods that I started prior to my time in Bernie. We source sustainable meats from local ranches and distribute those to central Texas. As far as giving back to the community, obviously, City Council is a very low-paid position, so that's one thing I do. I've also been coaching my daughter's soccer's team for about five years, team sports, and giving back to the kids is very important. I try to volunteer my time at the school to do reading or chaperoning. Saw John's wife yesterday at a field trip. And, you know, any opportunity with my city council hat that people reach out to me, I'm always there. As far as what I've done the past five and a half years, I'll just list them off, and then I assume we'll kind of get into details as we go. Number one is fiscally conservative. People are paying taxes to the city, and what we do with that tax money is very important. Proud to say that we have a very well-balanced budget in the city, unlike, you know, Austin, Washington. We maintain that, and we make sure that we maintain the level of community things that the people want. So we're able to be fiscally conservative, but still maintain all those amenities we like. Emergency services and first responders, making sure we prioritize police and fire, ambulance in our communities is very important. Very clear from our community, that's important. We've done our police, fire, just excellent. I love getting to see the growth of Chief Perez. When I started, he was lieutenant, now he's chief.
Sure.
Absolutely great person, and morale is awesome. The new fire chief, Manny, he's great as well. I've known a lot of the lieutenants kind of down, and again, morale's at all-time high. We're going to have a second fire station coming. All really great things. Transportation, obviously a huge issue. I saw your post this morning about the traffic. I was, when I left the soccer fields last night, I think I waited about 30 minutes just to turn on to 46. So, you know, I feel the pain with you. But we, as a council, formed a committee to look into that. I think we'll go into that a bit, but transportation's huge. Water, you know, when it rains, I think we start to stop thinking about it. But if you look down in the aquifer at the lake levels, we're really low. And so how we manage our water and growth is very important. Stormwater, drainageway protection zones, low-impact development. Proud to say I was on a committee that helped form those. Those are tools that have helped maintain water quality and indirectly with help manage growth. Smart growth, we hear that all the time. We understand that you can't have no growth. If you have no growth, you don't have a growing vibrant community. So how do we do that in a smart way? So those are the kind of main topics looking at.
Well, thank you, Ty. Thank you. So Jeremy, you're in, live in District One, obviously. Can you tell us a little bit about District One and why you're running, why you feel it's important for you to step into the race?
So when I moved to Bernie three years ago, I'm a four-letter state, California. I come as a refugee, not as a...
Sure.
I did a lot of work, business, in the state of Texas. I've been to a lot of the areas, Houston, Dallas, so on and so forth. Found that a lot of these areas were nice, but they were concrete jungles. They were LA.
Sure.
And the area I lived in, in Fontana, California, was, when I moved there, was a nice area. It still is. But with the population doubling over 20 years, a lot of the areas that I liked to go hiking through and to see the beautiful mountains were blocked by four-story condos and townhomes, and trees are getting knocked out, and Amazon warehouses everywhere. And it wasn't, it wasn't an environment I really wanted to be in anymore. I liked nature. So I came to, I sold my home, lived in my RV for a bit, and found Bernie. And I explored the area. I'm like, this is absolutely beautiful. I love this. There's greenery here, there's water, there's creeks, there's trees. Everybody, you know, you shake hands, you look them in the eye, people hold the door for you, people hold the door for people. There's a lot of respect and a lot of really good people. So called my kids, I said, 22 and 24-year-old, both boys, I said, "If I buy a house in Texas, I found a great place, are you going to move in with me? Otherwise, I'm just going to explore the country in my RV for a bit, until I find, you know, another spot, which everywhere I've been, I doubt I could." And they said, "Yes." They're like, "You have that house? You could have just called and said, 'I bought a house, come move.'"
Nice.
So they moved in with me a few months later, and, you know, we've absolutely loved it since. They both are prospering here. Yeah, as am I. I didn't know anything about the politics of Bernie when I came here. I didn't know District One, five. When I first heard about districts, it made me think 100 games at first. But, you know, I started, on City Hall map, I started looking at, you know, how districts were set up, and who could I contact if I had some sort of issue?
Yes.
And, you know, the house I bought was built in 2001. And my son, through the whole process, he's on Zillow, he goes, "Dad, you could buy a house for $50,000 less." I was like, "Yeah, but we're living in a tight community, with, you know, five feet on either side of the house. I don't want that. I want someplace that has..."
Little breathing rooms, yeah.
Exactly. You know, would 20 acres or 100 acres be nice? "Yeah." What, do I know what to do with all that space? No. So, you know, I have a half-acre lot, Cree Creek Trail.
Yes.
My backyard. So last night, after the rain, all the frogs and crickets and everybody's out there. You know, I love to sit there and just listen to that.
And so why did you, when you got here, it sounds like you got involved right away. You tried to get informed of your city politics, your county politics. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
And why? Why did you? Because most people come in here, like me, and it's just, as long as your water's working and, you know, the lights are on, that's it, right? We don't care to find out.
If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Right. We don't care to find out who our city councilman is, or who our county commissioner or mayor, until something's wrong. But it sounds like you wanted to learn right away the politics.
Yes.
Where does that come from? Is that from your background, or?
No, I've never been in politics.
Okay.
I'm a cybersecurity engineer.
Okay.
You know, when I get, I'm an engineer in general, so when I get bored, I read things like, you know, the Chernobyl reactor, this positive void coefficients and stuff. That's what entertains my brain.
Wow, he's embarrassing me. I get on Facebook.
Playing chess, playing...
Yes, sure, sure.
So on. And, but I wanted to learn about politics here, because there's an impact, potentially, in the future. And that comes from, in Fontana, we had a huge community. It was well-established, houses were all built anywhere from the 90s up to 2000. My house was built in 2000. I bought it right now. And there was an old sanatorium that was turned into a church. And the church became huge. Minister was a very good minister. I followed him for a bit as well. And the church reached, they had satellite offices everywhere. They had like 15, 16 satellite offices.
Sounds like a business.
Yeah. We call it the super corporate mega church.
Gotcha.
In the long run. They went to, they got this idea, and they said, "We're going to build an auditorium, and we're going to build a parking structure for everybody to park in, and we're going to put parking lots all over the city. And we're going to have shuttles bring people in." And this was quarter mile from my house. There were houses all around. There were no businesses. This is all pure residential. And they went to planning zoning, planning zoning. It looked great. Everybody there went to the church.
Of course.
And I had no problem against the church itself, but what they wanted to do was not appropriate for our neighborhood.
Sure.
And so they came down to the city council hall, and they said, you know, "Dear City Council, please vote for it." They gave them the dog and pony show and all that. Most of the members of City Council were members of the church as well. No one refused.
So they voted for it?
They all voted yes.
That's the, I can see how that could rub you wrong. I have, you know, I got to ask you this, since it sounds like that's what got Jeremy involved. What got you involved before you became the councilman? What got you involved to run for City Council?
Sure. So go back five and a half years ago. Joanne Zalito, who was in my position prior, he had moved out of district. And once you move out of district, you have to relinquish your spot. So then councils allow to appoint one person. So heard about that, was encouraged by some people to put my name into the hat. It's kind of like a job interview in this case. And reason I agreed to do it is I thought that the demographic that I fit was unique for the position. Downtown business owner, so, you know, downtown is the key to a thriving community and what we have there. You know, we've transformed from just antique shops to breweries, restaurants.
True.
Bars, and that creates an environment that helps maintain that uniqueness of downtown. So that was one. I felt like the age demographic that I fit was unique. Generally, people, at that time, I was 30, 35, 34. Pretty unique to have someone that young, who's also has several businesses, and young kids put their hat in, because, well, we're busy working, taking kids to soccer, all that. And I knew it was going to be a time commitment, but my demographic represents a large part of Bernie that doesn't always have representation at the city level. And then I just wanted to get back to the community. I think that, you know, giving over what yourself is really important. And so those three combined, put my hat in, dipped full in, as far as like homework, reading all these documents that...
It's not an easy job.
Not an easy job. I met with many people, school district, other city council members, mayor. And then City Council meeting came, they did an executive session, did the interviews, and they chose me out of the four people. So that's why I did it. You know, just backing on Jeremy's topic about California, the church thing, you know, we take a vow for ethics, where you would not vote on that church, right? When, I've only had one time where I've had to recuse myself, and it was a pretty far distance, but I still, talking to the city attorney, made the, you know, legal discussion that it was better for me to recuse myself.
So you would recuse yourself if it was a vote on your specific church, or is it a church and state issue that?
No, no, no. Right. If there was a church that was coming to City Council for a zoning change, I would relinquish myself, because if I'm giving to that church money, well, then I indirectly have a financial or spiritual, you know.
Sure.
So in my case, that's what I would do.
Okay.
And usually you can talk to the city attorney to make sure that's legally right.
Interesting.
Because my $150 a month is much less than what the city attorney gets.
I was going to ask him that, John. How much do these guys get paid?
What, 200?
150 a month, and we pay taxes on it.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to laugh, but wow.
Yeah. So, you know, 110, $120, depending on...
So you're not doing it for the money, you guys?
Not at all. No. In fact, and, you know, you could say if you're running in an election, you probably use two years' worth of funds to fund your election.
Oh, my goodness.
If you're not taking donations.
That's, well, that's commendable. John, do you think they get a take-home car? And, no, no take-home car?
No.
What do the county commissioners, the sheriff, judge make?
Over 100.
Oh, okay. Wow. Should have asked that.
I will say, just to give, because, you know, a little bit off-topic, but Commissioner Chapman and I have had many conversations. They don't have the staff that City has.
Okay.
So they are, like, for them, it's a full-time job.
Right.
There are city staff making larger numbers, and they're doing the bulk of the work. So the way the structure is built, just to give the commissioners some due diligence, like, they are making more because they're doing more.
That's true. And you're very kind about that. You're very kind. But they, your job, your job is still tough. I mean, because I still, I would call Ty if I have a problem.
Sure.
And I'll call Richard if I have a problem. And I don't call his staff normally, so they still have to deal with these calls from constituents.
So Jeremy, just in, going back over this, make sure I got this right. So you've been in Bernie for roughly three years, and you came from California. Now, so I'm going to play devil's advocate here. I'm sure some of our listeners and some of our viewers are automatically up in arms that, oh, he's an out-of-towner, he's from California, and he's only been here, you know, three years. So, and there are, there is Kendall County, I think the last census has us roughly 45,000.
I believe so, yes.
Right in that, in that number. And a large portion of our rural, and portions of the city are still considered rural, depending on where at in the district, but are still old, what we would call old-school Bernie, right? How do you plan on connecting with those voters and encouraging them to support you in your bid?
So an old boss told me once, and my grandfather too, who was a huge influence on my life, if you read my Facebook bio, I actually make a whole section about my family history, which is extremely important to me. It told me, "You have two ears, two eyes, you have one mouth. You should be looking, you should be listening twice as much as you're talking." And I found, I identify as an introvert, but I'm finding that I'm somehow some kind of extrovert in this process. You know, the scariest thing is to walk up to somebody's door, knock on the door, and say, "Hi," you know, I'm wearing the white shirt, and I'm running for City Council District One. I'd like to talk to you. And people will tell you, I've learned things on their front porch, that they will not tell you in any other venue. At City Hall Chamber, on Facebook, on email. You know, there's lots of people on Facebook, the great killer of truth and all that. But the biggest thing is to listen to them. They all have a story. And I love to listen to stories and flex stories from people. A lot of people have already, you know, they're like, "Where are you from?" You know, "You don't have a Texas accent. Where are you from?" "I'm from California." And I explain my family history. I was raised as a conservative by my mother, who was from Tennessee, my dad from California, my grandmother is from Nebraska, my grandfather from Iowa. So they were farmers. They grew up in a rural area. They used y'all. I knew we were, we were all in trouble, and all y'all came out.
Right.
So the biggest thing to me is to really listen to them. And, you know, I'm not here to give them my opinion. I'm here to listen to what they have to say.
So do you think the demographic in Kendall County then is representative of some new blood? And I think we all know that there's been new blood coming into town. So are you finding that you connect better with those folks right now, or are you having some success in connecting with, you know, the older generations in Bernie?
I think a lot of it is, since I was mostly raised by my grandparents during my rural formative years, I associate very easily with older folks. I also associate very easily with, you know, younger folks as well. So it's, I think if people feel that you're actually listening to them and seeing them, that makes a difference. If you come in and you're like, "Well, you know, this is, this is what I think about this right off the bat." You haven't listened to anything, and they've already locked you out.
Sure.
If you start off listening and tell me your story, you're going to connect much better with them.
Right. So that's well said. I remember, I met President Donald Trump when he was running for office the first time in Vegas. There was a debate between all the Republican contenders, and I met him backstage, and he asked me what I did. And I said, "Well, I'm a retired border patrol agent." And he started to tell me how he was going to fix the border. For about 15 minutes, never let me talk. So, nice guy, but he didn't really listen to my, take my input. And then, of course, he went off. That was my Donald Trump story.
15 minutes of his time.
That's pretty darn good, I would say. I did, you know, and got a picture too, so. So Ty, it sounds like Jeremy's been doing some, what do you call it, walking?
Walk-walking.
Walk-walking, or what do you, you did that with Kyle Beederman.
I did.
Walking this.
Walk and talk.
Walk and talk. Have you done any of that, Ty?
So I first started with people I know in the district. There's a lot, you know, always answered phone calls, answered emails. And to Jeremy's point, generally, it's listening. And when people want to want some advice, you'll give, you know, give that to them, or point them to city staff to help them with specifics. So I've started there. I will start blockwalking, probably starting next week, and then into early voting. It was a little, if you did it too early, people were confused with the primary election.
Oh, that's true.
And then the spring break last week, my family and I went on vacation, so I didn't do it then. But the goal is to pull the voter data and knock on the doors you should knock on.
And that's, I think Jeremy alluded to it, that's, that's, it's scary. It's nerve-wracking, I would think. No?
No, no, I'm actually, I mean, you know, the fact that I have an opponent is encouraging me to do that, and I love getting to meet more people.
You don't mind going up to some stranger's door and knocking on the door?
Not at all.
I guess I'm a former cop, so I always...
I'm a former pizza delivery man.
Oh, there you go. That's the difference. You guys are more courageous. We knock and move to the side like this. Well, that's great.
No, I'm looking forward to it. Again, it's just going to get people to see my face.
Sure.
And I'll listen to them. If they want to hear from me, great. I'm sure I'll learn some people who don't like me, which is okay, for whatever reason. You know, you try to do the best you can, and...
John's used to that. And he handles it well, right, John?
Gentlemen, let's touch on what I think we all consider to be a touchy topic, and that's going to be growth, the ETJ, the loop, you know, all that big elephant that's hiding out in the closet. And I think that's probably going to be the...
There's a very vocal group in Bernie, in Kendall County, that seems to get all the attention about growth. I hear from the same group of people, "Oh, my gosh, you know, we don't want any more growth, and we're going to lose all our water." And they may be right, but I'd like to hear from different people, different perspectives.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's a good question. Let's talk about that.
I'm not sure there is a correct answer, though I, you know, if I'm allowed, my personal opinion is that it's going to be somewhere in the middle. I think it's a great step forward, but I'm not sure that's going to provide the answer, because somebody's not going to get represented.
So I think it's a start. I think getting Andrea, Chad, in a meeting with two councilmen, and then probably Legal and some staff, probably Marion from the county, Jeff.
And you're referring to Andrew Wijian, County Commissioner, and Chad Carpenter, County Commissioner.
So I believe that's who...
Right. That's who was selected, I believe.
I think it's a start. So I don't disagree with you, John. And I get, you're right. At some point, our citizens have to become engaged. And that group that's outside the city, well, we're going to need people in the city who care about, you know.
Absolutely.
And so I just give...
Kids in school and...
So I think it's a starting point. We haven't done this. So just getting two and two, and they may come out of it with, nope, we're both disagree with everything, or maybe we're going to have some crossover. I think there will be some crossover. I think some of the transportation stuff, I think is going to be where we start, hit some brick walls. But starting point, so I don't disagree with you, I think they may come out with that, saying, "Hey, let's get some citizen input and go from there." We have a working interlocal agreement.
Right.
It's not like, nothing's...
Yeah, the sky's not falling right now.
No, no, no. And I think that's a misnomer, just, yeah. And then...
Fair enough. Jeremy, what do you know about that? And what are you going to do if you're elected for City Council District One to help with the growth in Bernie? Are you pro-growth? Like, we need more people to come in here and build, or are you like, we got to stop all the growth here now?
We need to be smart about growth.
Okay.
We need to say, "Does this fit in this place? Does this fit in this place? Does this work? Does the church in the middle of the huge neighborhood work? No, it doesn't. Where else can we put this thing?" I was, I watched a few weeks ago, after your invite, the forum with Ty and Chad Carpenter.
Yes.
And when it got towards the end, I was surprised to hear that they weren't working together. And they agreed it was a great idea. I'm thinking, and so in my industry, I have to collaborate and work with all kinds of people. We get, you know, we had one project, we had 75 people, and we were all working towards a common goal. I feel sorry for the project manager, collaborating, you know, get the schedule going, keep everybody, you know, all the ducks in a row and everything. But I was really surprised to hear that there was no real collaboration there up to that point. So, you know, and that's, you know, from my perspective, just looking outside in, you know, I don't know on the inside if it's, you know, no, the law says you must not do that. I think working with text, working with Austin, working with even with federal. Go in there and have a conversation with them and say, "Okay, this is what we want to do." As I said, too, developments, we don't necessarily need more people. I think we need more business, because I want my kids to be able to...
Have a job here.
Have a job here. You know, I'm talking with some of the younger, you know, the 22-year-olds and all that. My son said, "Why do I care about really what's happening in Bernie? Because I'll never live here."
Interesting. So have you heard of Dos Greenhouse?
Yes.
And do you support that? Because that's what they're doing.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea. I don't think that the city should be paying money into it, but I think the city should be working with them.
With Dos Greenhouse.
Yeah, and the same for the EDC and the Chamber of Commerce and everybody else, that we're all on the same page, that they're not thinking in a vacuum. You know, "Oh, this is the greatest idea." You know, I did martial arts, Taekwondo and all that. I worked with a guy who, you know, we sparred and all that. He thought he was the greatest fighter in the world. He was done. He got in a bar fight, and he was down on the ground in 20 seconds.
Yeah.
So, you know, he thought he was the greatest thing in the vacuum, but in reality, you know, he got off the road.
Good example. Ty, in fairness, well, are there any rules between a city councilman and a county commissioner getting together for lunch and talking?
So I just want to clarify. So in that conversation, Chad and I were saying, we personally had not.
Okay.
Chad had met with the city manager, and I think, you know, as Jeremy will become aware, the way our kind of city structure works is the city manager gets input from city councilors, and then he goes and has a conversation with commissioners based on that input. So to say there hadn't been any conversations is incorrect. It's just Chad and I personally had not sat down to talk.
Right, okay.
So there had, Chad had been working with the city manager on the interlocal agreement, including the last edit, which was an edit based on the conversation they'd been having.
But there's no rules prohibit you from picking up a phone, calling Mr. Chapman, saying, "Go have lunch."
Vice versa. I'll be honest, that most conversations I've had was with Commissioner Chapman.
Using your district.
He's in my district. He is my commissioner, and he has reached out to me about topics. Also with Christina, who's, you know, will be the outgoing commissioner. She's reached out to me about projects. So I always say the phone works both ways.
Right.
And with our structure, the city manager had been working with their commissioners and the judge. So I wanted to just talk about the topic, because to me, it comes down to two main things, private property rights. Everyone probably in this room would be like, "Yes, for private property rights." John, libertarian side would probably be more so.
John owns almost all the land in Candalia anyway.
And so how does private property rights versus smart growth, environmental impacts, how do those collide? What do we do to balance that? So some of the group, the vocal minority that lives out in the city, they'll say that, "Leave my property alone. We want to do what we want to do." But at the same time, they're saying, "You're allowing too much development, and you're not letting people do what they want." Well, you can't have all of those. So our job as a councilperson is to create regulations that help manage those things. But indirectly, they are going to impact private property rights. If you create a rule about storm drainage, well, that either made the home more expensive, or maybe said, "You can't build right there," right? So that's, so that's one thing. But at the same time, you can't, if you were to just say, you know, let the market decide, I guarantee you the market in this community, if you just let the market do it, our population growth would be even more.
Oh, I bet. We'd have, yeah, because I know we don't have a lot of those chains, chain restaurants in town, right?
And there's reason. So it's interesting. I've learned, like, I'll use Chick-fil-A as the example. Everyone loves Chick-fil-A in Bernie. You've got one, Leon Springs. So you actually have to pay them to get them to come in.
Oh, my goodness.
So it's not like...
It's not the other way around.
If you want a Chick-fil-A, you go to Chick-fil-A and say, "Here's X amount of money. We want you," and then they'll start looking.
Tax abatements and... Tax abatements and all that kinda stuff.
Correct.
That's why we're getting the Hooters instead.
Yeah.
No, don't start rumors. That's not true, folks.
Um, I touched really quickly on the importance of Dos Greenhouse, the EDC. Um.
Okay.
We're good. Yep, so um, with Dos Greenhouse, the importance of the city being a partner in that. Is because of how important it is to see um, growth in our community from businesses.
Right.
And to be an incubator for more businesses and to make sure that when kids come out of high school with this great idea, there's a, there's a place. So we use taxpayer money to he-. To help pay a portion of that to make sure that our community is gonna be thriving in the future. I will say that the EDC from where they were when I came in to where they are now is totally different and their scope. And mission of what they wanna do with our community, after working with the University of Texas to work with the community to see what we wanted. So that's cybersecurity, that's ag tech, all these things that are gonna help our community continue to thrive. Again, that's the importance of why why we do spend some of the taxpayer money with those groups, because it's important for our future.
I see.
I think, you know, growth wise, I look at the situation I'm still dealing with. Specifically related to water. You know, the first thing out of a lot of people's mouths is, why is my water brown? Why does it stink? And from the the bloom that's happened in Bernie Lake, um, hopefully, you know, it's coming up here, hopefully. Hopefully, we get, you know, more rain and that helps helps the issue out. When I first moved here, it was no water issue. Um, but you know, one of the issues that we're, uh, that my whole neighborhood's having, and I'm pretty sure it's all over. Based on the number of foundation repair companies out there is the aquifer, all the straws are pulling water out. The water that was going down, there's nothing to support the earth over it, the ground is subsiding. You know, one whole corner of my house has dropped an inch. I just paid seven thousand dollars to have that fixed. Piers, but big holes and all this other stuff. The, you know, city permit process was was easy, you know, contractor took care of all that. But that's a a huge issue. You bring in even more people to live here. You know, the average house takes three hundred gallons a day. Worth of water and you multiply that by, you know, X number of of homes going in. That's not even including landscape.
Right.
So you start watering your lawn and all that, it's just, it's.
Uh, how do we, how do we, how do we stop this? I mean, the this growth, it's, it's like everywhere I'm driving down the road, there's more more neighborhoods popping up. Uh, 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 how, as a city councilman, how would you, how would you help manage that growth?
I think we need to, like I said earlier, we need to really look at the project and does this make sense to come into Bernie? Do we need, you know, the the hot topic, George's Ranch?
Yes.
Eight hundred more homes going there that are gonna be taking additional water, adding sixteen hundred, two thousand, twenty-four hundred cars to forty-six. That are gonna have to hit that intersection, you know, your drone video I saw that that mess there, I drove through there. My son had a bad accident there. His car was totaled in that intersection. So. Uh, it it comes, to me, it comes down to this, being smart about what's going in and being able to come back and say. No, this doesn't make any sense for the area. You know, you don't need, you don't need a five thousand unit apartment complex.
And how do you, how do you, is that, I'm sure you faced that, Ty, right?
Yeah, so.
How do you tell people, no, you can't build here anymore, like developers?
Absolutely. So complicated. So zoning is number one, right? So if someone doesn't have a zoning and it's a, a holding. Holding zoning is which is what it is if it's new. Well, then whatever the project is, it's gonna come forward. So I would say in the city, I don't think that's the bigger issue. It's what's happening outside. Um, since uh, Jeremy brought up George's Ranch, so brief history of George's Ranch, it was. A state-created water control district. So water said, okay, we're gonna create a district. Then the county approved the septics for that. So this county was the first person to approve that, right? I know the city seems to get all the blame.
Yeah, interesting.
And I'll get to then the next process. So then what happened is that um, Kendall West Utility, which is now Canyon West. A private water utility.
Well, let me go back a little bit. So when you said the county approved the the septics, that was the opportunity to say no, right? They could have said, we're not approving and then that that George's Ranch wouldn't have happened?
Except that state, right, state law limits your, what you can say.
So the county.
Basically had to say yes.
They had to say yes, okay. Just in fairness, okay.
We could go back to like, this is why the state needs to give county more.
Right. Okay, good enough.
Different topic.
Okay.
Um, so private water utility says, we are going to give you water. Which then basically you could do one acre properties, that doesn't count setbacks and such. So. A tiny section of George's Ranch was in the city of Bernie's first right of refusal for that project. So we get that letter saying, hey, they're going to provide water. What do you wanna do? You guys know the stories. We had a meeting and we said, okay, even if we don't like this, do we want a project that we have no say in? Or do we wanna take the incentive to say, we do wanna have some.
And manage it.
And manage it and not just that. Now we have the control of any development that happens along Amman and forty-six. Why that's important is because we have things like Purple Pipe. We can say, listen, if you want, you wanna tap into this, here's what you're gonna do. And right now developers don't wanna do.
That's not cheap, right? The Purple Pipe.
So we made it a hard decision that people come at us now, but it was a smart decision because of future growth.
That makes sense.
Decisions you make about what's a smart development. So this development wasn't necessarily a smart one, but we had to make the decision for future growth.
Well, it's mitigation. E- essentially, it's mitigation and we shouldn't be in that position to begin with, which again, to your point, is a completely different topic.
Totally.
But as as business people, we never wanna be in a position where we're mitigating something.
Right.
No, it's, and this is the second time since I've been on council, we had to do it. We also had to do it with WCID three and sewer. And it's it's, you're you're not, there's not a right solution.
Boy, and you're not very popular when you have to do things like that.
You're not, and that's, that's okay. And I'm, again, I'm here and more than happy to talk about why we do it and I will. Um, most of the people who live outside the city, city limits know about this. And and they know and they just refuse to agree that there was ever a letter of uh, first right of refusal.
Gotcha.
Seen it.
Gotcha. Well, John, do we have time for uh, I'd I'd like to ask them one last question.
I think, I think, yeah, we should give them a another question and then give them about uh, twenty, thirty seconds to.
Okay.
To wrap up with why uh, why we should hire them and.
And I think that's my question. I think uh, I'd I'd like to start with uh, um, Ty. Why should the the, your voters in district one of Bernie, Texas reelect you and not your opponent?
Absolutely. Well, um, thank you for that question. I will say that I have a proven track record of all the things we've been talking about. I I think that if you ask Jeremy and I our list of what we want to see, it's pretty similar. What, but I've been doing it for five and a half years.
Okay.
Water, we created water committee. That number one thing to figure out what we need to do, water conservation. Starting next week, we're gonna talk about. Um, giving incentives for rain catchment and um, i- irrigation, um, ways to reduce irrigation water use. That's the number one reason we have issues in the summer. Transportation, transportation is hu- huge issue. So we created a. A committee between Far Oaks, Kendall County, City of Bernie to look into all the issues related to transportation and now. Last year, we went to the voters for bond approved money and we're gonna start doing road projects that are based on voter feedback from that committee. Um, stormwater drainage, water quality, again, a topic that people have said is important. We formed a committee. We came out with rules. We're we're doing it. People say emergency services are important. Well, we're funding our emergency services, making sure they have the staff they have, building another fire department. Um, people want it, want us to be fiscally conservative. We've lowered the tax rate three years in a row.
Okay.
While still maintaining the quality of life that people want in Bernie. Smart growth, all the things I just talked about. That's how we have smart growth. We have to make sure we know that the state is a private property, right? State, we know that. At the same time, manage that through smart ordinances and regulations without o- overstepping. Or if we do overstep, know that we need to bring them back a little to make sure they're fair.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Thank you, Ty. Thanks for being on the show. Uh, Jeremy, uh, it sounds like you guys have a lot of similar uh, platforms. But so tell us why, what separates you from from Mr. Willison and why we should elect you?
So I look at everything, you know, I mentioned the Chernobyl Soviet reactors and all that. I look at everything with an engineering perspective. Numbers are numbers. Two plus two is always going to be before, no matter what anybody has to say about that. I listen, I see things, I report them. You know, I went to city council a few weeks ago and mentioned uh, an issue with the fire hydrants. Um, I reached out to city council, I reached out to Michael Mann and, you know, brought this issue up and. Or continuing to to have talks about that. So I see issues, I talk about the issues, I go report the issue. And I listen to what people have to say. To me, whether you have a, you affiliate yourself as a Democrat or a liberal. Republican or libertarian, whatever, I don't really care. Do you, you have an issue? Whether you live within the city or not, if the city is offending you because you're in the ETJ. You need to be able to have some form of voice on there too. Even though you're not paying taxes, you don't have representation, you still need to be listened to as well. At least until the ETJ thing is uh, sorted out. So I'm figured out why that hasn't been sorted out yet, but. Um, that's the the main, my main thing.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. Jeremy Pratt, running for uh, Bernie City Council District One.
District One.
Ty Willison, our incumbent uh, city councilman, district one. Thank you, gentlemen, so much for being on the Texas Examiner today and and agreeing to sit across from each other.
Thank you, guys.
John?
Folks, just wanna remind you to please uh, make sure that you help us out uh, with the algorithms to to like each episode, to share each episode. Please comment. If there are other questions that you have for either of these candidates, you can always email us at info at. TheTexasExaminer.com or you can reach out to us on any number of uh, social media uh, platforms.
Yep, so there's something unanswered. We can reach out to these gentlemen and get you the answer back on our, on our platforms.
Correct. And we also wanna hear from you about other stories that you would like us to to cover. And uh, other guests that you would like us to invite on the show because as we strive to be better with every episode. We wanna make sure that we're providing you the content that you wanna see and that you feel is going to help educate you to make better informed decisions. And improve the quality of life within Kendall County. So real quick, the general election uh, for the city is on May fourth.
May fourth. May the fourth be with you.
Right, and.
April twenty-second.
And April, is that it? Yep. May fourth and then early was what?
April twenty-second is early voting.
April twenty-second is early voting. So folks, again, I know we take pot shots, y'all, every once in a while, calling you keyboard warriors, some of you. But seriously, if you wanna make a difference in what's going on in our community, you've gotta get out and vote. You need to go participate in the city council meetings and the county commissioner meetings. In fact, there's one uh, coming up on Monday that's gonna be interesting.
And call these gentlemen. Call the city councilman, call your county commissioner. The their phone numbers are there and they answer your calls.
So I think that's it, Robert. Folks, we appreciate your time. We look forward to producing several more of these episodes for you. Uh, we, in fact, we're fixing to record. Who's coming up next?
I believe uh, Dr. Macaluso and his uh, his opponent, uh, Nick Nuke.
Nuke, Nick Nuke, yes. So thanks, folks. We appreciate you and we'll see you next time.